Now called to order the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors workshop meeting. If you could please stand. I will lead us in the pledge and Mr. Cox, if you can lead us in the invocation.
I pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America as to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for another wonderful day in Powhatan and help us with our many blessings. Thank you.
You may have a new invocation. Any requests to postpone or amend today's agenda? I move that we approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll now have our first public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. If you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes or five minutes if you're speaking for a group. Anybody on Zoom?
Zoom is clear.
Alright, seeing no one, we'll close the public comment period, moving right on into our workshop discussion. I think today we were kind of had the final plan and one last run through everything. That was what I gathered. So if we want to start at the beginning?
Chairman, I have.
Oops.
Sorry.
Cut.
I have page eight and nine. I have a number. I only have, I think I have three or four things that are consequence, but two little things that I think we're important to go through.
Okay.
If we look at eight and nine, if you look at the population graph up there, we need another font for the ears. I just can't read that, okay? And could we update all, we now have a 2020 census. These are all estimates from 19. Can we update that?
If you're done with that, the one thing I have on page 10, I thought we changed, I thought we had dialogue about blueprint versus guide, and I thought we decided on guide. Or did we decide, didn't we decide on guide? I thought the realists decided on guide and, am I correct?
Yes, because I think we decided the blueprint was more.
More too specific, exactly. Okay.
So blueprint become guide?
Guide, exactly. Okay. Alright, what else do you guys have?
Page 16. Where we're putting in goals are from our strategic plan rather than simply the skeleton piece. We have part of our strategic plan that has them, but has all of the measurements underneath it. Okay?
So you want the measurements from strategic plan added in, or should we refer to it in this?
Well, we don't need the skeleton if you have technical, if you have this, it states. It restates an event, gives all the strategies.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that would be more helpful than just the.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Heck, Dan, everybody, can we use the numbers at the bottom of the comp plan for page numbers? Because I'm.
We have two numbers, okay?
You want to use the comp, probably a number, not the agenda number?
For some reason, I don't have the agenda number from sign down.
You need the 10.
So I need the 10. Yeah.
So you need comp plan number, not the agenda number?
Please, thank you so much.
Okay.
What if we don't have our comp plan?
It's the that.
Is it this?
Yes, that.
Okay, so as long as I've got the station, okay.
If that's the stuff we gave, is that new?
Which you gave.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
What am I, what is, uh?
What's it coming?
Did you understand?
I was taking notes from the last.
Bill, explain to her what you want for the page 16.
We have, we have the, that's it. We have the strategies, the charts, rather than just the skeletal outline. Next thing I have, I don't know, which one, which number to use. It's in our agendas, 23, and it has a little bottom next to it.
It's really just something we'd use one left hand.
There is a left handle on this.
How many versions do we have, I think?
It's all one version with different.
Numbers.
Different numbers.
I don't understand.
I got, I got a number on the left hand bottom and I got a number on the right hand bottom.
Well, if you go to page 23, they'll both be on the right hand side.
So what page are you on, Bill?
23, little five.
There we go, that works.
21, little three.
Thank you, guys.
So I went with 21, 21, okay, got it.
Alright, underneath infrastructure, I think it'd be good if we update, you know, what we know from Firefly Grant and the resultant would have a certain percentage of the county now with broadband by 2024 and include that information. And that we're going to continue to work the following to remain our account.
Mr. Cox, you have 23?
23, little five, objective ED4, the last strategy ED4C. Manage residential growth through implementation of land use plan and revision to land development regulations. We've never managed residential growth in this county. It's just a question of, is that what you want to do? We've managed commercial, but we've never managed residential. This is to help us get to 8515. I understand what it says, but that's just something we've never done. And it's somewhat hard to do.
So your recommendation is to.
That's the question. Are you comfortable? I just wanted, are you comfortable with that? If you are, it's fine, but I mean, this is, this is a little different.
Comments, anybody?
No one else cares, then move on.
Alright, next.
My next one is comp plan 38. That's a left hand number.
Yep.
The strategy IFPR4. It's the fourth one down, obviously. It says, build a greenway network of trails and paths. Goes on, and then in accordance with the master plan, we, we have a comp over and over and over about trails and the need for master plan. I would put, create a master plan that builds a network. We really need a master plan, okay? Create a master plan that builds and everything else just flows, flows, flows by.
What page are you on here, sir?
38, 38, 38, 37.
Those these dudes in the small one right now.
38, 37. By the way, this, this is a 10.
Alright.
I have a place I'd like to go back to. It would get to big 33. The Firefly installation target area map that's there, can we put that on one page?
Much better idea.
Yeah, and then you can see those, maybe, maybe see the words, the street names, road names, the.
Chairman, can we go back to page large 28, small 29? Matrix there showing systems, areas, capacities. Well, we had a discussion about Fountain Bridge, utility company. I'm not sure what was the reason we took it out.
Because we don't, it's not part of our system. It's not part of our system.
Okay, is Aqua Virginia progress system?
No.
No, so why would we?
So why would we take a, leave Aqua Virginia and take a Fountain Bridge?
That was a recommendation from Mrs. Carter. She came in remotely and we went through a bunch of.
She did say something.
It seems like maybe if we identify the ownership, what's the problem? It is existing infrastructure, but if we under, under, it is servicing our citizens, so why would we want to show?
Put it back in.
Put it in.
Put it back in, yeah.
Page 31, large 31, little 3. A 2015 water and wastewater master plan up at the very top, headlines capital projects are needed to line up the projected population growth anticipated through 2035. Do we really want to go back and use that information from the water sewer so that we did back then? Because again, that was really not study. It was showing how we went certain ways with water sewer, bringing it to the county, what the cost would be, what sample comes from, you know, all revision of, you know, 5260, going from Flatlock to the courthouse. So I'm not sure that's relevant today. And I'll be doing, going to the water sewer district map just in a second. Subsequent page, because that needs to be redone, and I'm not really comfortable with what we've got there now representing our water sewer district.
And 32, 32, 31, what would you, what would you take out?
That sentence, back to 2015 water, which is, headlines projects.
He's asking that over here, the map, right, Bill? You're asking.
No, he's asking the paragraph.
He's asking the paragraph.
The first little paragraph on page 31, small 32.
Right.
First paragraph, second sentence, because 2015 war and wastewater master plan aligns the capital projects that are needed to align with the projected. Those projects were really alternative estimates of costs. They have those on route, water, or, you know, different ways across the county. So I'm not sure if that's an accurate statement to that.
So we'll need new verbiage for that whole quasi-small paragraph, because that's the whole.
Well, but the last paragraph says to implement the 2015 water and wastewater master plan. Do you want to do that?
Bill, we will have, we will have an updated water wastewater plan. We know we have to do that. I'll get to that in the progress of the station implementation. But the 2015 plan shouldn't be dominant right now in the, in the conference of plan. We know it's going to change. We know we're going to have a different map going forward.
Should we leave it until we have the new map that we can reference, or be, we have nothing else?
Just striking 2015.
Go ahead, do you say?
We could just strike 2015, just referring to the master plan. If we know it's outdated, we're not paying too much attention to it. Once it is updated, it's still relevant.
Still relevant, we could do that.
Pull out the correct.
Pull out the year, okay.
Over to the map on page 32. Where you see the water wastewater service districts, one in the middle. What does that include, Brett?
Between the two special areas.
Yeah.
So that would be like the gap area. So from roughly, I think, Flat Rock, I think, kind of ends at basically Duncan, where the special area plan ends at Duncan, and then that goes off to.
My question being is, do we have a, is that, is that a service district that we plan?
It's, I think, in the 2015 water wastewater master plan, yes, it's shown, but we don't have any.
Are we looking today, you know, in their expressions, you know, with the comp plan, the future land use, not always planned?
Yeah.
Alright, so that's my point. The water wastewater plan, plan, map, don't line up with what we're talking about in the conference of plan.
So strike that area out.
The area from.
In the gap.
Between, between two special area plans.
Yep.
Now you're still showing, you know, that whole blue area there. I remember when the formal board did that. Notice that it extends in great length going out into off of Route 60. And we sit, you know, we won't look at areas like Chestnut Oaks. Again, is that going to happen?
It's not happening.
No.
I don't think it's, I'm, so I'm just trying to get some reality, you know, like what we've been doing is we've gone through the conference of plan, clean up some things.
Why don't we keep the blue and the red outlined area, and mix it in the rest?
I'm okay with that.
Would you like it to happen?
Keep the blue and the red outlined area, and then just get rid of it.
That's in our special district.
Yeah. So then get rid of it, the rest.
Would, would you like me to? So we wanted to just correspond with the growth areas. If you go up, you see there's that little section that doesn't have anything to loop in it. Do you want me to like expand it in that area?
Yeah, that little.
60, so basically, it's just going to be the exact same.
I think that's reasonable, would make sense.
Also, here's the 711 district. This one, also, 711 cross, this, this cross is 288, and our growth district does not.
I'm just wondering, we even need a map if it's just.
Well, that was relative.
Yeah, like, can I just write it somewhere? But we'll figure it out.
I mean, does it help us, or does it confuse us? Say it.
Maybe, because we'll still, even if we take it out of those areas up here, we're still going to have, even if we all agree it's outdated, the 2015 water wastewater plan is the most current one we have, so that's still going to be out there, not matching this. So it'd be kind of disconnect. Maybe we could show, maybe the blue areas outside the growth areas, we can show like hatchet or crossed out or something to acknowledge that there is a plan, standing plan out there that shows these areas, but we acknowledge that they're not currently where we want them, so that if you, if you look at the two, you can still see they match. We'll give you some context that we don't intend to expand there. Otherwise, if we remove it completely and pretend they're not in the plan, then I could see later, somebody pulling out the wastewater plant saying, wait a minute, the comp plan says here, but the current adopted water plant says this, so maybe we should acknowledge that.
The war plan was never included into the comp plan, okay? That, that whole thing, there was a specific vote on that. So if we, if we have it just as part of the growth areas, okay, we're going to do another plan and we can change it at that point. We know we're going to do it in the growth, in the growth areas.
Yeah, makes sense.
Well, your implementation plan, you're, there's two years out. So this is not the understanding coming on all. And neither is Chestnut Oaks.
That's true.
My advice would be to avoid confusion with like conflicting maps that might be floating around, is to just eliminate this map and maybe have a statement somewhere in there that says wastewater service should generally align with the growth areas. Otherwise, we're having.
Two different maps.
Yeah, exactly. That's probably, it's going to be kind of weird. I can tell we get an updated thing.
Don't read the map at all.
Exactly. Okay, that's fair enough. Okay.
Next thing I have is large 36 and small 37. So.
Okay.
Paul. What number are you on, page 30?
36, make 36.
36, they're all on the left, right hand side.
Alright, at the top. Facility space needs assessment phase two. What is that?
Sorry, which part?
Facility space needs strategy IR or WR, CF1. The top, very top of the matrix.
Yeah.
Facility space needs assessment phase two. What is that? I'll fit so bad.
I don't know. Do we have an assessment phase one?
We do have a facilities assessment, five years ago, possibly.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't recall if it was broken out into phase one or phase two. I'm just familiar with the overall facility needs assessment.
Does that need to be updated?
That's a nice way to put it, yes.
So why don't we say space needs assessment, and leave it at that? Okay.
On that same page, CF4 has a hanging sentence, and.
Oh yeah, the plan should recognize and.
CF4, it just, the last sentence is kind of hanging.
Yeah, eliminate that. The plan should recognize and.
So how does that sentence read then?
And for financing to maintain existing facilities and update space needs assessment to plan your facilities.
Hold on, I'm not going to four.
Oh, you're on four. I didn't say about the whole sentence, since we didn't know. Yeah, you get rid of it.
Well, I think it does exist, it's not pulled down, so I can pull that up while we're talking.
Okay.
So the plan four is gone. Strategy, that stopped saying, strategy four is gone.
Well, that's what.
No, 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 no.
It, it exists, it's just the tables cut it off.
I can't remember what it said.
Well, she's pulling that up. Anything after, I know you've added 37, Bill. Okay.
Chairman.
Yes.
Did we find out the owner of Beaumont?
Yes, I think Brett sent an email that too, Brett?
The Comets of Virginia owns it, and then they kind of assign it to different departments or divisions. So Beaumont, as I recall, the Department of Youth and something services, which is under DOC.
Juvenile Justice.
That's the, yeah, yeah.
DOC.
Yeah, so it's.
Controller.
Right.
We're missing half the sentences up there. The plan should recognize and incorporate all overlapping departmental tasks and interests.
Okay. I can understand.
Okay.
So back on page 31, small 32. The county should only expand services to this area. Plans turn owned by Beaumont, due to corrections, that's not the correct state.
So change thing.
It's just a name change. That's, you should, from what Brett just said, common for the general.
Chairman, I have large 31, small 32.
Okay.
Around 711 village, bullet points. As soon as possible, this area will require additional water sources and sewer searches, sewer service, such as purchasing from a neighboring jurisdiction. It's going to go beyond that. It's going to go to groundwater and to alternative treatment facilities as well. So it's going to be a combination of all of those.
Who has the next?
Next thing I have, I'm sure, large 53, small 54. I'm in the 30 strip.
Small 38, large 37. Excuse me, we've already done that, sorry.
He'd already did that one, just the master plan for parks.
Where were you?
Large 53, small 54. It's the existing land use map. And you've got the in red boundary for the special area plants, and you've got that area in the middle between the courthouse and Flatlock, which is shown as a special area plant.
That one area, is that where there's already existing businesses that you're talking about, the 60, no, they're all 603?
I think Brett has referred to it as the gap.
Correct, but you, you see where that one little red area is? Is that where you're thinking that where the 603 bubble is above it?
Yes.
Is that where Food Lion is?
Oh, this is just, I need to update it. This is just our old boundaries. When we first started updating, that's what it looked like. I just need to update the boundaries.
Okay.
Honestly, I forgot the wrong snap.
So.
So we fixed it.
So it's going to be.
Yeah.
Okay. Hang on, just a second. So let's look at the map for that district. Let me turn the page.
I think that'll encompass that.
Well, it should show us what, what it's supposed to look like.
Yeah.
Yes. It will look like. So that is this, shown on the right.
Right.
It, it was a little smaller when we first started, and now it looks like this, so I just need to update right now, that's all.
Great.
Alright.
Next thing I have is large 55, small 56.
Okay.
Wonder how to use this chapter, or is it the use categories? Neighborhood residential has been taken out. My understanding is we're kept in neighborhood residential east of 288 down Fountain Bridge.
Yeah. Is that economic opportunity though? I thought we did that whole, hold on, that one.
You actually corrected me on this last time. I thought it went out, okay? And you said, no, it's, it's.
It's existing.
It is neighborhood residential, here it is.
We have, we have two colors, okay?
Okay, okay, okay.
Just.
So we got, put that back in.
Next one I have is large 58, 59.
58, 59?
58, 59, over on the right hand side.
Okay.
At the top, it says Fountain County will have a land use pattern dominated by preserved rural character with high quality and economically productive mixed use. No, they're very little mixed use.
I clearly define locations, though.
But we have, we don't, okay, this says it'll be dominated by, okay, economically productive development, just take out the mixed use.
Wait, hold on. Fountain County will have a land use pattern dominated by preserved rural character. With high quality and economically productive mixed use. We do have some mixed use.
Yeah, yeah, but it's not dominated by, most of it's single use.
Yeah, I think it's dominated, I mean, I'm not going to.
It's about rural character.
I thought, again, it was about the rural character more than the economic, because you defined it.
I have an English major by any means, but it's sort of, it's talking, with the comma there, it's referring to dominated by preserved rural character. Common, then you go with high quality and economically productive mixed use development. And, you know, I don't think we're, we know we don't have a lot of mixed use, but there's.
Go ahead, we have, we have something.
Well, we're going to have a discussion that's going to go at that, you know, just in a minute, about east of 288 and south. Well, we're going to have a discussion that's going to go at that, you know, just in a minute about east of two eighty eight and seven eleven of that area. Like this very topic of what we're going to call it and what we're going to be doing. I'm going to hold off on that. It's going to be more.
Okay. Sorry, is mixed use staying?
Well, let's take to the same point. If we say define locations, what do we have at Fountain Bridge? What would you call that, Brett?
Uh, was like including Winterfield?
You have that?
Yeah, mixed use.
Okay.
Okay.
The problem is the word dominated. You know, dominate to me.
If you think after dominated, then it.
And that's fine. I mean, that will satisfy what you're saying, but the word dominated to me only applies to.
Preserve rural character.
Preserve rural character. That's what I'm saying.
I would agree with that. Yeah, I think.
I think the comma changes, you change, you shift it.
Okay.
Now, I want to talk about objective L U two over on the left hand side. And I want to talk about that. We need to go to page seventy because we're talking about conservation subdivisions as two or three different words. When development occurs in rural areas, a preferred form of development is conservation subdivisions. Got that, okay? That doesn't say it's the only way. Says it's the preferred way. Now, go to page seventy, which talks about conservation subdivisions. Page seventy.
Page seventy.
Seventy sixty nine. World seventy, big sixty nine. Okay. Now we're starting, we have rural areas and we're starting to talk about conservation areas. Go down on the left hand side, go to the one, two, third, fourth paragraph. The conservation style subdivisions are recommended as a by right development option. Question for y'all. We have another by right option in there. That's called private road subdivisions. Okay, are we, when we go ahead, we want to write rules to back this up, okay? Are we happy having two or is this trying to get rid of private roads?
Well, private, private roads, when there's more than three lots, they have to afford supervisors for purple. So I'm not sure if that's by right.
By my right, for ten lots, okay, you can do it.
But you have to get approval from the board supervisors.
For a private road.
For a private road.
For the road.
Yeah.
But you can cut the, you can cut a ten acre lots over the road, okay? So.
So there's no count.
It's not bad. By right.
Great.
Okay. Aren't conservation subdivisions going to, then if you go down to the last paragraph? The rural, starting off rural areas, it said these subdivisions, talking about existing subdivisions, should not be expanded until future sections are designated as conservation or large lot subdivisions. Are we going, so are we, we've never really said out loud that this is going to be the only way we're going to develop rural. In fact, this is coming back, you and I. We're talking about it. Frank, you had some ideas, didn't you, Frank?
About conservation subdivisions?
About expanding rural areas other than just conservation subdivision. That's what you said, or what did you say?
Well, see, we had, we talked about planned unit developments, right?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, so when I spoke to you last time and what I would pitch right now is having some little overlay that we could utilize in spaces where you could change and base manufacturing. What's densities, bonuses, anything you want in those areas when the overlay comes into effect.
This is ninety five percent of our county.
I understand that.
That overlay doesn't, overlay then becomes a giveaway.
But there seems to be so much desire to control growth and control what gets built that why not create a mechanism by which you, someone could apply for and you could put some type of bonuses in there that you find desirable, whether it be conservation of land, whether it be some sort of mixed use development, whatever you want it to be. But create a rule set for someone to take advantage of to overlay over a piece of property. And if people are going to have to come for their ten, ten acre lot road, might as well come for a whole plan to give some sort of bonuses to them. Bonuses to the county in exchange for whatever density you're willing to give up to get those bonuses.
I like that.
I don't quite understand that. I'm sorry.
So in Winchester, we had them and we were constantly altering what was in that. Oh, and so generally people, we had a limit on five acres, several ton to do planned unit development. And we had it in there to be very flexible. So you could eliminate setbacks if you want to eliminate high restrictions. We had all sorts of bonus densities attached to it. So you know, let's say it was thirty units an acre. Say you could get up to sixty units an acre, that was creative numbers to you. If you say we wanted parking garages, we'll give you a little bit of bonus to work towards that cap of sixty to trade the density for something you want. It's a parking garage. We wanted elevators for higher buildings. We wanted solar panels on buildings. We wanted lead buildings.
But this is, this is rural Fountain County. We're not building thirty unit.
Totally understand that. But what would you like to see out of developments that would be positive for the county that we could create bonuses for to say, hey, we really want to conserve land. That could be a bonus. We could, well, you know, maybe it's an infrastructure project of some kind. We had, you know, bike shelters and things like that. If you want to put in a park, you can get a bonus for that. All sorts of things. You can figure out what it is, but you make it so that the developer can achieve these bonuses. So that you can not just give away your density freely. You get something that's a benefit to both residents up there and the county branch.
Our situation here, whether we're going ninety five percent of the county. For residential development, commerce. Allow something other than a conservation subdivision. Really doesn't get into. Bonuses. I mean, we have a bonus of a conservation subdivision from the amount of land you set aside, but are we going to give another option for development? Have R five today. Okay. And that, I mean, that's, that's the one, one hard question we haven't been able to answer this year.
The, to hit, back to his thoughts, is there a way you could, how does that look in a zoning ordinance?
So it's, it is something that's applied for. We have to create a new district. I know that the end result of this is you want to change zoning ordinance in general. So I mean, this is just another type of district that you would create. And so that could then apply for, you generally have to have a base density that it gets, that it gets applied for and basically just kind of overrides what is there.
I'm just wondering if we did something like that. I mean, we, it's definitely a think outside the box kind of thing, but you could get more of what you want instead of, because the R five, I think everybody kind of complains it's sprawly. That's.
Well, I, I don't disagree with.
Yes, it's sprawly. So what could we do that is a little more liberal than this traditional conservation subdivision, which we haven't had a, kind of had a dearth of applications for that. Let's face it, we've had one.
Well, and we have not.
Built one yet. So clearly it's not effective and developers aren't biting at it because obviously the density bonuses or whatever isn't palatable. They want something different. So what could we do to give us what we want, still kind of preserve land and, but give them a little bit more worth? I mean, because at the end of the day, it boils down to money. I mean, if they're not making money on it, they're not going to do it. So what, I mean, there's got to be a way that we could, we can do this without such a traditional R five, R two, or, you know, maybe there's some way we could look at that.
Brett, we're trying, we're trying to hit it. Brent, you were going to come to Hanover County. Did you ever get any information out of that?
Yeah, so their, their conservation style, they call R C, rural conservation, I believe is what it stands for, is very similar to our conservation style subdivision. They've been successful with those. I think why they've been successful where we haven't so far. One, we only recently, what, eighteen months ago or so, updated our standards. So prior to that, they were too restrictive to work where theirs have been kind of where more ours are now, much longer. So they've had many more years to utilize those. They also have more growth pressure than we do, but theirs is not very different.
Do they also have alternatives other than that? If you just use your alternative, it would.
Yeah, no, that's really all they have that they're utilizing in their rural areas. I mean, they have also things like comparable to an R two, R five, things like that, but most of those are going to be in their suburban growth areas that have public utilities, things like that. So in rural areas, almost all the developments happening by R C.
And I, I know I was thinking, a lot of this really goes more to zoning than our comp plan, but to the density bonuses, do you think we are too stringent on our density bonuses, you, in your opinion? I mean, do you think, you think we would have better luck if we had a little more generous bonus density?
I mean, that's the feedback we've gotten from every time somebody comes in and wants to either do a new development in a rural area or wants to, you know, dust off an old case that hasn't been built to see what they can do. We always push conservation subdivision. And the thing that we always hear again and again is the numbers just don't work for them. And those are really two things, the number of lots, the size of the lots, the amount of roads that they have to build, all the other stuff. Doing trails, doing parks, doing open space, all that they're fine with. They just can't get enough lots to make the numbers work. So it's really the main lever to make it work or not work for the development community is the density density.
But the, with the current one, this, okay, works apparently. The one that's working its way through the system. The problem with that one is B dot.
It's that.
Yes.
Yeah. And I had those conversations, in fact, I had that conversation with that folks last week. That's my big concern was we're already hearing from developers that the road cost is the big issue regardless. So when you start spacing out these lots, the road construction costs get so high and they're not going to make lots in the key setting. But bigger than that is that the connection pieces, they want you to have a stub connection to the neighboring property. But how does that work if, let's say, you conserve like seventy percent this way?
You still have to build the road.
And where does it go? And then let's say someone builds out another one next to you and maybe they built out this corner and now they're supposed to connect the largest gap.
Yeah.
And so I was really pushing him on that, saying, well, can you please ask your, you know, higher ups there whether we can have some sort of fuel process for this because ultimately we're just trying to conserve land. It's not a normal subdivision. This is a normal sprawl, I guess you would say, where you would want these roads to connect. And so he very much understood my point, but their, their rules are really not set for that. And there are also not rules that are really within our control. And I don't really think we have an appetite to make them all private roads either. So there needs to be some larger fix.
I'm sure.
I'm trying to get around. I always look for me.
Madam Chair, Mr. Wagney.
Hold on, I just asked to be recognized, you know, I'd like to jump, you know, just on this conversation. Let's go back to Hanover. Hanover has been doing this and yet we're similar, but somehow it's not happening in Fountain County. Something's, something's wrong. I don't know what it is, but the issues that we're discussing, the problems we're having with B dot. How would they treat this? Obviously they're making it work some way. So I'm, I'm still interested in more information and the comparison side by side of what they're doing versus what we're doing right on that subdivision level. You know, what are their regulations to call it for? If they're doing it, it seems to me we should be able to do it.
I'll have to ask them about the stub road issue specifically because that didn't, that didn't come up when I spoke to them. That was before we found out that was a big problem for this one that's working its way through the system now. I'm going to ask them about, you know, what have been the challenges in getting developments through cluster and subdivision. They did bring that up as an issue. A few of them that I studied, they did, did have external connections and were public roads. Although they were not built, they were just, you know, shown that there's future phase will connect here, but there was no future development there happening yet. They weren't going next to existing development like this one is. It's a little unique. But I'll ask them, I'm sure again, they've done thirty or so of these, I think, if I remember the numbers right. So they, they must have been through it.
Frank, you mentioned, you know, an overlay district. Okay, and being able to incentivize. Right now, the reason we have conservation districts is because, you know, our goal of wanting to preserve open space, something that people in the county have told us. So that is one of our goals. So if you're looking for an overlay, what are the other goals to go along with that goal of preserving open space? So I see what you're saying. And again, getting at what is it we want to see? I know right off the top of my head is the preservation of open space, but beyond that, what is it that we want to see? Because those goals would have to be incorporated in overlay, that's my comment.
Matt?
Yes.
Um. Mr. Barry and I met with a developer. Conservation subdivision and then had follow up and. Luckily, you seem to believe that getting waivers was a real possibility, that that was, the B dot issues, the waivers for a lot of things, a lot of different ones. That's my understanding, my experience. Yeah. So the question is, is a waiver, and we need to sit down with Rebecca and talk, talk with her about what she thinks we should be doing. Because our ordinance specifically eliminates the need to have a stubber or to connect. So ours is about, in fact, you can go ahead and build it. You just can't get the roads into the state system, which, which means then the homeowners may not have a fund. And that works against the development.
Could, going back to this overlay thing that you were talking about, then the preservation of open space, could you be at, could you have certain things like, because I know in one area, we don't want to see them from the road. We don't want to see the houses from the road. So if you do that, nothing, everything is from the road. If you have a certain portion of your houses that are considered affordable housing, would that kind of stuff all add into the bonus densities like it does with does in our own economic opportunity? Well, currently that is in more our village center and village residential, if I'm not mistaken. I think we have that, you know, where you get the density bonuses. So I'm just saying, maybe there are some other opportunities besides, I don't think it's a totally awful all idea is what I'm saying. I like, I like flexibility.
Well, what I would say is you can, you can rent the fine tuning level where you're comfortable with it, right? You know, the examples I've seen at least of using the conservation subdivision on ten acre lots, it's just one or two extra lots per se on the acres. It's just not that much of a incentive.
It's not.
And so we're talking about creating, you know, several categories, whatever you perceive to be the most important things, conservation land that we want, that they can achieve and attach a value to them. So let's say it's twenty percent for, for conservation land and maybe it's five percent for having a buffer of some kind, whatever it is that you achieve. But there should be some level of expectation that's going to create some level of density that you have to be comfortable with.
Correct.
It's going to be, that's the trade off. You might say, oh, that's a lot of houses, but we're going to get X, Y, and Z out of it.
Yeah. And we can still regulate the density.
Oh, exactly. So let me see if I understand this. Okay, it's really not an overlay. This is a worksheet, okay, that you come in, you have a piece of land. Overlay to me sits on top of a specific area. This becomes a worksheet, okay, that if you're hundred acres, got to have a hundred acres, okay, let's just make this up, okay? Then you can begin to use this worksheet, okay? So it's not.
Yeah, overlay is a bad name.
It's what it is.
So all it really, all it really, all it really becomes is another version of the conservation subdivision.
Correct.
And so if Hanover's got something, back to David's point, if Hanover has something that works, why don't we just go there?
And that's fine. We just got to figure what the metrics are.
Correct.
Throw out the ideas.
Madam Chair, so the real emphasis in order to get the developer to jump is density.
Yes. It's money.
Of course. And then the road issue, you know.
But I can tell you just from my experience working in Harrisonburg, which in our cities, I understand that, but Harrisonburg was not trading the density. And so it was just like a loose, I was watching a loose situation happen.
Right.
Where people were just building whatever respect they want to build to because there wasn't a cap. But if you institute a cap, which we already have, you know, ten acre lot or five acre lot or whatever, but don't give it away for free. Whether it's a big county or not.
Right, right.
I wonder, I mean, can you get a larger proffer, say a larger cash proffer out of it?
We don't get cash proffers out of this by right.
What's that?
We don't get cash proffers out of it.
So there's no way to put that into it, to tie that into it as any type of.
Mr. Wagney.
The developer gets something that the county gives something to, so both parties win in some way, shape, form, or another.
The thing that Frank's talking about, the planned unit elements, the overlays, that, that would be the reason that you have to come and request it. It would be the right.
See, so if you did something like that.
Right, so the proffers would be available. I got you.
Correct, but if you did, then, I don't know.
Hanover's R C is a zoning district. You have to rezone to it. It's not by right, I think. But there's, there's been, you know, some history that there's expectation that it's known what the county wants. And if you design, build it, and generally you're going to get approved. So I think that's why it's been successful is it's been in the works for several years. So there's you know, less risk on the developer if they design something, they kind of know what they're, what they're looking for. You know, we're working through ours, so it's, it's, we're kind of figuring out exactly what we want. If it gets to that stage where we've done enough of them, these are standards, working with them and knowing the development community knows them, then I think a lot more success. But.
Right.
We're all kind of working through it together now to figure out what we like, but then we get pushed back and belted as well. That doesn't work for the numbers, which then comes back to us to kind of work on ours. We're all kind of working through it together now to figure out what we like, but then we get pushed back from Belkirk as well. That doesn't work for the numbers, which then comes back to us to kind of work on ours. We're just not, not there yet, I think we're getting.
Madam Chair, I have a question, Brett and Frank. Bring back, I want side by side. What they're doing, you know, what you call RC, I'm even more surprised that they're making it work. And they're requiring rezones. And we can't make it work and we're altering this by law. So there's got to be something there, side by side, that's significantly different than what we're doing versus their. So I'd like to see it, you know, in terms of not only the zoning, but subdivision of offices as well, governing.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll get that. And one, one thing I'd point out too, that I think maybe Wise there has been more successful is. I think we've, we've only recently started to clamp down more on some of the, all the other variety of options with. Single cut family divisions that we know were being, you know, abused and used. So there were, there were all these cheap, quick, easy ways to develop land in rural areas. So why would you go through the trouble of that, right? Like Hanover long ago had done away with that. So really. This was the only option. So, um, again, we're, we've made big progress on that now. That progress has only been a few years. You know, where theirs is more techy. It's, we'll, we'll do some more comparisons and see side by side. Um, you know, why we haven't seen, um, the use that they have.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
When you look at that, Brett, one of the things that we did. Current one would reduce the frontage that you had to have for lots, okay? Uh, the biggest single cost is roads. That's the biggest single cost. And so the developer was able to cluster them more. And when we were talking, uh, even though they averaged, uh, much more, he said, look. Three, four acres is all I need. That's all my people, I mean, his customers are really interested in. Uh, and so because they were able to push them together on West Road. Uh, and it made it work. We haven't, really haven't gotten there yet with this, okay? Now, maybe the density needs, needs to change. And this one is sixty percent open space. He maxed it, okay? So.
But let me, let me ask the follow up question. You know, you're talking about the frontage of, of the lot.
Yes.
As it pertains to the road, the units, the, the units on the subdivision.
Yes, sir.
Give me a good example of how it works. It's kind of famous bridge, Bell Crest and Bell Bridge. You go down and look at the frontage of those homes, it's very deceiving. It looks like, you know, that you've got these homes, you know, pretty much, you know, side by side. You've got the frontage. Then when you actually go into those homes or walk around the homes, you realize then how large they are. Because they're running deep. They're not running this way. They're running to the back. And the other great thing you'll notice is, like over the golf holes. You feel like you're in the country. When you look outside, your back of your golf hole, you're seeing trees, you're seeing greenery, you're seeing golf course. And you have rain pistas. So your point is very good. You can do that and give them more units. You know, by, by cutting down that lot frontage and longer route subdivision. And accomplishing the, the views and looking out at the countryside at the same time.
Our original. Um, ten acre conservation subdivision kept the require, our normal requirement for lot frontage, frontage on roads, okay? Which defy the ability to cluster them, okay?
Right.
So. I'll get much further on this one.
Well, I was just gonna, and a lot of this is more applicable, applicable to the zoning ordinance.
Absolutely.
So we'll be able to move on, you know?
If that is our own way.
If, correct, which at this point it looks like it is.
Okay.
So we'll figure out and tweak that.
Could we go back to fifty eight, fifty nine? Uh, LU three. Says establish and maintain a compact pattern of mixed uses, including residential and business development at specific focal points. We now have a name for those focal points. It's called commercial nodes. You're, you're, you don't look like you're happy with that answer.
I don't know.
I'm just trying to, well, we've been, well, we've been, Brent, these designated growth areas. So I'm not sure it's the commercial nodes.
I don't think it's the nodes. All of them, I don't think are the nodes. The nodes are at major intersections, so.
Right, but.
It's talking about the growth areas as a whole.
As a whole.
Okay, but. Uh, let's drop down to small sixty, big fifty nine.
Yes.
Neighborhood residential is taken out and it's, it's in.
Sorry, I just got that out of my head somehow.
Why, sorry.
Yeah.
The only place, excuse me. Is it the only place that the, the neighborhood residential is applicable is, um, down at East two eighty eight?
Yes.
Go down to economic opportunity. What was, I'm sorry, Bill, where are you? I'm sorry.
Same page.
Yeah, same page.
Yes, you have got it.
Large fifty nine, small sixty. In the matrix, it says economic, uh, opportunity. We have economic opportunity east of two eighty eight. That's different from economic opportunity along Route sixty. Going what? Number of units per acre, it's four units per acre. Now though, down at Founders Bridge today, and they have more than four units per acre, you know, witness the new artistry. Uh, apartments. So again. And we'll go a step further. It's economic opportunity. Really describe what's down there now? In terms of, you know, thirty percent residential, seventy percent commercial. Going forward, is that what we want to specify, you know, to the landowners down there? That anything that you do now is going to be thirty percent residential, seventy percent commercial? I don't think we want to go that far.
I thought you wanted apartments down there. I thought you.
I, I did, but.
Added that back in.
We did add it back in, but if you notice, the number of units per acre for economic development is four units per acre in the matrix. So we don't make a distinction. For the number of units per acre down at Founders Bridge, which would be high.
But you, you don't have to, because this is future land use, what they can do. You're not describing existing land use. So. If you wanted to add more apartments down there, then we would need to specify nine units per acres down in the seven eleven. You know, corridor. But if you don't, if you're happy with the four units, we don't have to put, correct me if I'm wrong. We don't have to put a descriptor for what is in this matrix.
Well, is this, is this the. Current, what we have down there?
Yeah.
Is this the current management?
This is recommended.
This is recommended.
Okay, this is recommended, so we're talking recommendations going forward.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. Are we recommending four units per acre down there?
I'm not.
You wanted more. Oh, exactly. So we, we would need to add a section in here indicating that.
Why don't we, why don't we start, let's just create a different name.
Well, one option is, um, if you look at what I did for number, the footnote four for village, I said higher densities may be appropriate. Subject to the adoption of a historic overlay, so that's for the historic core. I can do a similar thing to that footnote three, it's a higher density, maybe appropriate. In the seven eleven growth areas.
Okay, that's right. Yeah, but now let's go back to the land use designation of economic opportunity and the designation of seventy third. Do we really want the seventy thirty ratio down there going forward? I'm not sure we did. I'm not sure I want to limit and specify the percentages for commercial and residential going forward.
So you would want more than thirty percent taking higher density?
I, I don't know what the combination would be. What I want to do is maintain the flexibility, for example. Ms. Pruitt, you know, who is the largest landowner down there, I don't want to. Dictate to that development that she's trying to. Do down there in a comprehensive fashion, memorializing her father. I don't want to dictate something to her, where she's planning comprehensively, that says you got to do seventy thirty. I don't want to do that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So. You want a. A seven eleven mixed use district that speaks rather than economic opportunity, which speaks to. The density, uh, and the composition of that mix. Which would be another. Don't try, don't try and make that work for both of them when they're that different. That's all I'm saying. I mean, they're, they're. From what we have here versus what David says he wants, if that's going to be supported. One category is not going to make it work. Very different.
What does, what do you all think about that?
Um, I'm just gonna. Madam Chair, I'm just gonna go back to the way I remember this playing out. And this played out was. We took a vote on this and it was three to two. Mr. Cox clearly said he wanted the vote recorded. And Mr. Barry and Ms. Carmack, Mr. Byer, we all said, let's go from nine to four. And you and Mr. Williams voted against that. Um. That was for economic opportunity. Now, I understand what Mr. Williams is saying now, later. That he wants to protect some District One citizens. Development opportunities down there, or at least for that specific area, the name's been called out there. Um. I'm not going to have a problem with creating opportunities for businesses. But we took, we voted on this one, out of this whole thing, the whole entire comprehensive plan. This is the only thing that we voted on. Um, so to me, I don't know what Mr. Williams', you know, uh, objective is here to, to get accomplished, but. This, we voted on. Oh, we now, because this is my whole opinion, the comp plan anyway. You know, um, every six months, you just kind of, we change it to whatever is the mood of the day. However, we're going to go and we're doing it again. It's only going to take a few months and we're into a year almost. So my question is. If Mr. Williams wants to change it, maybe what we do is we leave what we already voted on, this board voted on, how it is. And then we come up with a different scenario for Mr. Williams in, in his district down there. Well.
Well, let me respond, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
A comprehensive plan is not something you adopt and put up on the shelf. It's a plan that, it's like a business plan. You're constantly adjusting as you go along. Otherwise, it's not a business plan. Now, in terms of the way that we're going about this and trying to get something out to the public. And we will be voting on as a plan. And try to just feature them. It's called whether or not, you know, we are in support of the plan, but we're deliberating over it right now. Chance of time to do this. And our goal is always to get it right. Now, if we have to go back and revisit something because we overlooked something. Or you tell me if you're running the business, you wouldn't want to go back and fix it? Because that's our job. This is a business plan for the county. This is the people's plan. And it's our job to get it right. It's not just to say, well, last meeting we said this, but now if we get more information from staff, why? And it's being brought forward, if we miss something, why would you want to go ahead and deal with it now? Before it goes out to the public? That's good. I can ask you a question. It's rhetorical question for the whole.
Anybody else want to answer?
I.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Valley, you're right. We took a vote, okay, and we really were focused on sixty, and we still have to disagree on sixty. That has not changed. And, uh, that's, has nothing to do, um, with taking work, seeing if this really does. Do what we should be doing down in seven eleven. Two different sections. I have no problems with the vote. I wanted to vote. I wanted to clear who was interested in having residential development on sixty and what. But that was really focused on sixty. That's really what it was a fact. So Mr. Williams had gone in and said, well, this doesn't seem to, to work for me down in seven eleven. So the question is. Do we want to support Mr. Williams's, uh, interest in expanding seven eleven? And the densities down there and how it makes you, composition come together. That's the real question, as far as I'm concerned. Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, to me, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Mr. Cox. The only thing that I would probably point out is, when we took this vote. Economic opportunity was three locations on the map. That's what we voted. Economic opportunity in, uh, the Founders Bridge area. Economic opportunity on Route sixty. We didn't separate with the vote that we're only talking about Route sixty. If somebody assumed that, that's not for me, that, that, that's how they voted. The votes are done. Um, in terms of, do you always look for a way to improve your situation? Um, and does market conditions change? Oh, of course. I mean, I ran a business just ten for almost twenty-five years. I don't think it was a failing business, quite frankly. So I guess my decisions and thoughts on that were pretty good. Um, of how I did that. Did I amend and change things that I did as I went along? Absolutely. And I don't have a problem doing that today. Um, but I think that we get sometimes caught into the weeds of this and we wonder what our situations are. And how we improve things, you know? I think some of the improvement is to become a little bit consistent, kind of Mr. Shardine referred to Hanover County, uh, quite a few times. They've been doing this conservation district for, uh, I think the word you used was decades.
Month.
Yeah, and, and so a long period of time, you become consistent, consistency comes into play. I don't have a problem, you know, updating what you want to do there and making amendments, but I do know clearly. We voted on all three economic opportunity areas to be, um, from a, a density level from nine down to four. We voted three to two to take it from nine down to four. On all three economic opportunities. It wasn't excluding one or excluding the, the, the two eighty eight Founders Bridge area. Or it wasn't, neither was it Route sixty only. It was all. Madam Chair. And I'm, 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 I'm fine to, to discuss whatever Mr. Williams wants to do, um, in regards to. Two eighty eight and improving opportunities, um, because conditions or situations change. I don't have a problem discussing that. But we did take a vote.
Madam Chair, once we took a vote. But that's not in, okay, let's move past it. You're right, we took a vote. All three were there. Now, Mr. Williams wants to change something. What's wrong with that? Nothing. Good, let's go ahead, man. Thank you.
Okay, let's, what do we, what do we? Yes, sir.
I freely admit, I missed it, folks. You know, when I was working for the state, you know, if you want to disarm people. Come to a meeting and tell you made a mistake. Okay, so I made a mistake. I missed that part of economic development. So today, as we're going through. These final chapters and we're looking at this information again. I'm trying to bring to the body. Recommendations that I think make the plan better. That meet the citizens' needs in this county. So I freely admit, I made a mistake, okay? I'm not locked in to making a mistake and perpetuating a mistake time immemorial. I make a mistake, I want to fix it. And I think we can do that, recognize it, but yes, we've had bugs. But you know, we can take more votes. In an effort to get it right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do we want to, which would be the easiest way to rectify the situation? Would it be to create a new district or create an overlay on it?
Brett?
I'll put it that way. Um, I think what we did with the historic core, we can do with this too. So we say, and we did this already with like apartments and neighborhood residential, we for, I think somewhere we said it, or maybe it was. We made an exception for seven eleven. I think we can just make an exception and say that higher densities, if we're comfortable with nine units per acres, we have up to nine units per acre, maybe appropriate for seven eleven. Village growth area.
And we would need to eliminate the thirty seventy, because the, in the economic opportunity, thirty percent is the max residential, residential. Okay, okay. All right, you could change that.
And we're saying that even ninety-four to thirty percent.
Yes, there's going to be no.
Mr. Carmack, you're right. You know, I don't want to lock into a certain percentage or a certain ratio. I won't.
So, Madam Chair, questions I understand. So, Madam Chair, questions I understand, are you gonna do a footnote like you did here, basically?
Yes, I'm gonna add to this at net three, and then for the, I'll do a, either right in that chart where we say the thirty percent, either right next to it, I'll say could be greater in the seven eleven.
In the seven eleven, Founders Bridge area.
I don't know.
Up to nine units per acre.
Yes. Yep.
Got it.
Okay, um, what's next?
My next one is Little sixty-six, Big sixty-five.
Okay.
Right up top, protected lands indicates land with intrinsic national features or means land with intrinsic national features? I didn't like the word indicated.
You want means?
Means.
Where?
First, right there, instead of indicate means.
Oh, my gosh.
Sixty-six, big sixty-five.
Little sixty-six, big sixty-five?
Eighty-five.
Protect, well, we start with protected land right at the very top.
Somebody pipe up, what's next?
Yeah, that, that was.
Okay.
Okay, um. Seventy seventy-one, Big seventy, Little seventy-one, and I'll ask the same question I've asked again, again. This states a mix of uses of residential development within rural areas should occur as part of a conservation subdivision. So, we really lock ourselves in there. If we decide to do something different, we have to come back and change that, that's all.
You don't need to worry about it, it's just, it was more observational, yeah.
Yep.
My next one is eighty-two, eighty-one.
My next one is seven, large seventy-six, little seventy-seven. So, there's a cost. We said we're gonna move solar farms into the zoning ordinance, bro.
Planning Commission's working on that now.
Do we need this in the comprehensive plan? As we do, I think there's probably opportunities to better reflect what we want to enter the zoning ordinance. Now, do we want to see these things from the road? We've had discussions like that. So, what I don't want to do is have something here in the comprehensive plan that doesn't line up with the zoning ordinance.
So, very consistent.
Right now.
Correct.
That's that there's some discussion about changing a few things that may, like project size, that may create a discrepancy in the future. So, as of right now, every single thing that's listed in the solar, there's nothing in here that isn't going to be incorporated into the ordinance.
All I ask is, you know, let's, let's make sure if we do change things in the zoning.
This matches up.
We go back to the comprehensive plan page and reflect that.
So, as of today, it's the same, as of next, it's the same, maybe.
Okay.
They're not deciding.
But let's leave this.
They haven't, they haven't finished the discussion, but they're not deciding.
Correct, let's just leave this in for right now, and then update it once it's, it's done.
Madam Chair, I could, just for the record, I actually don't think it's a good idea to put solar information in the zoning ordinance, I already tried.
In the zoning ordinance?
I don't, uh, state law allows us to have, have. Side agreements on a first case basis. When you put it into zoning ordinance, you're, you're codifying things that maybe you do or don't like, it, to me, it makes sense. Now that we're allowed to negotiate siding agreements that we want to do on a case by case, leaving it in the comp plan, and not trying to figure out. What's the right language for zoning ordinance, because we can do it in the siding agreement case by case.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wagner, this precisely the reason we wanted him, is to restrict it. We're not interested in negotiating things we don't want. Okay, we're not interested in worrying about side agreements for. Income, okay, it's about getting the basics right from the start. And that is why we specifically wanted it, and it's more back sending it. To the planning commission. Yeah? To put, to, to put restrictions on it. I mean, that, that was, that was, that was our intent. The intent was not to make it flexible.
Personally, I think if we're gonna put so many restrictions on it, and we don't really like them, I've said this before, take them out. Just take them out. I mean, they cause so much angst. Drama, trouble, time for, you said, we don't make any money on it, nobody really wants. So, I'm still wondering why we're worried about having pages in here, pages in the zoning ordinance, pages everywhere. We don't want them, strike it. We've got five of them now, we've done our due diligence, get rid of them, that's my opinion.
So, it's easier than harder, but not yet.
We're actually in agreement. What I'm, what I'm trying to say is, why clear up like the bunch of zoning amendments, we'd say, no, the siding we love.
Yeah, just, just get rid of them.
Put a lot of effort into creating zoning amendments that we can just say, no, thank you on the siding agreements.
Well, let's have a discussion. You know, do we want, or do we not? We can make this real easy, like Mr. Carmack said. We don't have to go through these discussions that was asked to be in the comp plan, which is, we don't want. I'm terribly concerned about taking a position that we don't want it, period, okay? In terms of this getting forced on us like cell towers. Uh, we know the governor and the current administration. Uh, is hell bent on converting more and more land to solar farms. They're going to do that. Uh, Dominion has a requirement to be green energy by a certain date. My point of view has always been, okay, let's provide a small, you can't see it. Uh. Opportunities here, we're still providing that option, okay? But we get it the way we want. The ones that worked successfully so far, although we can't see them, okay, and they're reasonably small. And. That's, Mrs. Carmack, I would love. To follow you down that road, I really would, okay? But I think it's prudent that we offer some opportunities. Uh, so that, and this is, this is, this is gonna, this is gonna continue to bubble up, because the demand on the political side for, quote, green energy. Also known as heavily subsidized energy, uh, is. It's gonna continue to come out in pressure to do something. I want the ability to say at least that we're doing something. Uh, if this board wants to do away with it, I'll vote with it.
You remember, two of the reasons we're leaving the comp plan is, right now, we have, you have to do a substantial compliance analysis. Especially if you're going with the zoning ordinance, you still need that substantial compliance analysis.
Yeah.
So, the only way to bypass that is a siding agreement, so if we don't want to go that route, we want. Language in comp plan, so that the planning commission has substantial compliance guidelines that it cannot, based on substantial compliance.
When we started off, we wanted to get this in line with what our ordinance is going to be.
Constant.
Which you, you just said, you just gave us a reason why we had to do that.
Madam Chair, I would like to have, you know, I don't think I've come to a conclusion about what it is that we're saying. Are we going to have further discussions about whether or not we want solar farms? You know, because I'm not creating complete agreement, Bill, on the point that. If we don't have it, then somehow it's gonna be mandated, you know, across the board. You know, we're bound to encounter, you know, we don't represent the other jurisdictions. So, I'm not sure what we do is gonna make a difference in terms of the statewide mandate. Okay? And then, the other thing is, if they do go to the mandate, okay? Then at that point, we can repair and go to what we want to do, trying to meet the mandate, and being able to buffer the mandate, you know, with our own regulations, you know, that. What we require if you have solar. Madam Chair, for the world of the board, all we have to do is remove one CUP option, and it's done.
Exactly, I.
I mean, that's. Um.
I think staff would be all over it.
If I may, just generally, as far as any use, the more use standards you throw in there. And, and generally, it moves out of CUP land. So, the fact that we have, we're adding use standards, and it's still in CUP, is confusing to me on some level, I would say that. So, I, I've got, I'm done to point to this, that we are adding standards, I'm taking my marching orders, I'm going through this ordinance amendment, but in reality, you already have the power to deny it, to make whatever restrictions you want to have on it as is. Um, so, there seems to be, on, on that front, a little bit of dissonance, I think. And it's confusing probably to anybody who wants to apply to it for these things.
Does, does the board have, Mr. Byerly, Mr. Berry, do you have any troopers one way or the other, getting rid of them? I mean, I know this is a little on topic, but let's wrap it up, and we can, you know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I'm ready to say one way or another right now.
Okay.
So, there's gonna be, so the planning commission's currently.
Right.
We're gonna, it's gonna come to at some point, discussion, anyway.
Mr. Berry?
I think there are some opportunities, I think, I agree with Bill on this, that there are some places that it could be appropriate, but overall, I think it should be a minimalist approach.
Okay. Alrighty, what's next?
Uh. Seventy-eight, Little seventy-eight, Big seventy-seven, crossroads. Every use, this is, this is a relatively useless designation.
We present such a question. We have.
No, no, we, you know, yeah, because. We would move them into crossroads to change the use, not because they're crossroads, you'd still change the use. We had a commercial, we had a commercial, little commercial piece, went to a store, and because it was close to a crossroads, we said, well, we'll change it to residential, okay? Uh, you didn't have to, didn't have to have crossroads to do it. We just have never built anything that makes any sense, uh, for what the crossroads were designed to do. It was foster kind of a little business note.
I'm, I'm hopeful that it will happen, I would, I would keep it.
And internally, we've had several inquiries about like old commercial buildings and flipping those, that they have, have been, lots of people have come.
They just did a bed breakfast at Clayville Crossroads, so, there are some applications, I guess.
Yeah, that's true.
Uh, eighty, Little eighty-two, Big eighty-one. Our favorite neighborhood residential. The second paragraph, the primary location for neighborhood residential areas is within the Route seven eleven village and along the eastern portions of the Spruce sixty corridor. The and along is, is out. Yes.
What's next?
Let's make sure, um, Little ninety-six, Big ninety-five, economic opportunity that we have. Evidence. And done right. And that would be, that would be on Little ninety-eight, Big ninety-seven, where it says mix of uses. Little ninety-eight, Big ninety-seven, mix of uses, this is under, uh, economic opportunity. So, it, it requires a certain mix of use, and that's not gonna be required for seven elevens. So, how, how do you, what do you have to do there, Allison, to make it work?
So, next, to where it says residential uses up to thirty percent of project area, uh, I'll either write it right there, or make, probably I'll just write it right there, um, a note that says, uh, a larger percentage of the project area. Do you want to cap it, or do you just want to generally say it could be more than thirty percent? Do you want to say it could be up to fifty, or?
I don't know.
You don't, so I'll say, uh.
These percentages don't apply to seven elevens?
Yeah, this doesn't apply somewhere, yeah.
So. My next one is. One oh six, one oh seven. We're now in the village. And we're looking at mix of uses again. The residential uses zero to eighty percent, commercial uses twenty to a hundred percent, those are so broad as to be almost meaningless.
To strike that whole, um.
Well, I.
Matrix.
I mean, I mean, it, it can be almost anything with you, with.
All that's doing is saying it can't be only residential. That's the point. It is, the point of this is to say, you cannot do only residential, you have to have at least twenty percent be a commercial.
Okay.
That's the point of that.
That's mine.
So, that's purpose, if we don't want that to be straight in.
So, that, the way it's written gives you a minimum of twenty percent commercial, and that's thirty-five. My next one is Little one-ten, Big one-oh-nine. Talking about community character, and you see in the fourth paragraph down, small scale multifamily buildings are struck. An entire, the rest of that paragraph awaits the first sentence, that entire paragraph should be out.
The one that has the first sentence struck out, and saying.
All right, that. We'll, we'll have to. Wait, wait.
Are you all fine taking that out, that paragraph?
Yeah.
All right.
Seeing some.
Um, the next one I have is the. One thirty-four, one thirty-five, this is the. Little seven eleven village special area plan.
No, I have one that's for you, okay? One, large one twenty-four, small one twenty-five. Commercial notes. Each of the commercial notes should have a distinctive character, I described on page twenty-seven, we took that out.
Correct.
Yep, I'm sorry, I'm, uh. We'll play it again.
He's on Big one twenty-four, with the, um, each of the nodes having a distinct character, we're like, that's not realistic, we took that out.
Also, while we're, I just didn't know, I struck off the residential stuff.
So, you'll have to put that back in, yeah. Although you wouldn't, because that's regarding sixty corridor, special area, you're okay, yeah.
I did it right, all right.
One thirty-four, one thirty-five, this is the village special area plan. If you look at the gateway business, that's got Casey's development in it, and you can't have residential in gateway.
Good point, just turn, change that to pink, or whatever color it's going to be.
Yes.
Yeah, going forward. Right now, but the pink may change under, no, yeah, I know it would, because you're just adding the footnote.
I'm into transportation, unless somebody gets there before me. Uh, one forty-four, one forty-five, no, one thirty-seven. And then, underneath the right hand side, Palatine County does not maintain any roadways. It says Palatine, some missed application to B dot, and I might just be nitpicking here. Uh, to B dot, the Central Virginia Transportation Authority, Richmond Regional Transportation Plan Organization. Right, should we say anything about smart scale applications to CTP?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, yeah, fair. Yeah.
Oh, right hand side.
Yeah, I think we've talked about that.
One forty-four, one forty-five, this is the Bay Harbor Thirster plant, now, yes.
Look at, uh, number four, right in the middle, that's at five twenty-two and sixty. Okay, and then go, turn the page over to one forty-six, one forty-seven, and we eliminate down to the bottom. Okay, now, we wanted to eliminate the
The project.
Yeah, but it's one is, the way it was something, okay? So if we, if we had four on the map, we gotta have something to tie to. So we take four off the map.
Okay. Well, what he's saying, we do want to do something, we want something there. The, the project that they presented was goofy. That was the thing with the roundabout and all over.
Seventeen million dollars?
Yeah. Exactly. It wasn't gonna happen.
So we'll reconfigure the intersection.
And maybe leave it at that.
Yeah.
With no money, no nothing. That's fine with me.
Yeah, say reconfigure the intersection.
My next one is one fifty-eight, one fifty-nine.
I'm at one forty-four, large, small, one forty-five, that's a thoroughfare plan map. At the top, you have a blow up from the map. And it shows a minor arterial proposal. We've been, so it looks like it's Route sixty. What is that?
It wasn't, it, it's deleted. We removed it. It was a proposed.
So the, the map itself has that out there.
Some remnant of it.
We, we took it out of the big map but left it on the little.
So just need to update that much.
So the only, the only proposed road is that one labeled thirteen. That's the wrong one.
Correct.
Right.
You, you gonna update the map?
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Next one I have is small one forty-eight, large one forty-seven. Page road. Got widened pavement, widened pavement. Right in the middle, N two of widened pavement.
Uh, man, reference, where did that come from? We were supposed to take that out? That's my thought.
Did we take that out or did we decide to leave that in and do like the shoulder trenching and stuff? I thought we talked about that.
It used to say widen and straighten, it said straighten.
We eliminated straight, but we kept the widen for when they repave it to add that. That was why we did that.
Where did you get your numbers, Brett?
Uh, I got that answer, you can still answer that. Um, but it's based on the highest possible estimate for adding shoulders to the side of road. So I just went highest estimate.
What do you have for shoulders?
Uh, I'm trying to remember what I had, but I don't remember. I had foot, foot.
I want to make sure that, you know, we're not going back there inside the B-Dot white way, proposing, you know, land acquisition. Vehicle to comply on the pavement. We're talking about shoulder wedging where we've already got, that's the B-Dot white way where we can do it.
I will say this is, yeah, they're not massive shoulders, but adding shoulders, but then I went with the highest estimate just in case it's less.
Let me go back to, we're gonna do that on Page Road. Where we said widening and other places where we don't have anything pointed that says, you know, we need to do that, you know? On every one of these other projects, it points to a plan, a smart scale application. We have nothing on this, so where did this come from?
I can add that. It was a remnant on there and we had talked about, from the old one, but we I remember we specifically talked about this and we kind of lamented, there's so many complaints about Page Road being this windy, treacherous road. We kept it in there and said, when they do a repaving, why don't we have that in there so we can do the shoulder trenching on Page? Am I correct?
Seven-Eleven kind of approach?
Yes, exactly. It was the seven-eleven approach, yeah, for Page.
Uh, we could essentially do that in Polackie Ford Road too.
Correct. I mean, we, we, we could have, I don't, um, remember what I, if you want to take it out, take it out, but.
Well, we could add a rock.
For Ford Road, I mean.
I mean, we, we could do this, you know, we could do this for projects really with all of our roads because you know, none of our roads are, as we recall, uh, like free bridge, you know, for example. We don't have any shoulders there or anything.
Sure we do, the deer stand on them all the time.
And, and I don't think if you need to do, have, if you're doing basic shoulder trenching, I don't think you need that in your thoroughfare plan. I mean, we did it on seven-eleven. That was strictly a recommendation, so I think we could be getting a lot of nitpicking.
Unless we're going for, um, you know, if we're just using our local funds like we did on that.
Yeah.
We have total discretion, but if we're going for RSTP, smart scale, any of those things, having your complan does, does help you. So, and that might be how we have to fund some of these in the future, so.
And one thing about Page Road, it's in our growth area, as opposed to some of our other roads, which if you're going for those kind of funds, you're gonna want it in the growth area. They're not gonna probably give it to you if it's not in that, would be my guess.
So what are we doing?
We're keeping it. Let's roll. Anything else?
One fifty-eight, one fifty-nine.
I'm going to go back to, okay, to one fifty, large one fifty, small one fifty. Uppage commentary, your full body extension, plan reference, you know, I would insert a smart scale application. Did we have this someplace else before we get the smart scale?
There we are, uh, one fifty-eight, one fifty-nine, chapter ten, action fire evaluation. Both on the short term and midterm, we have the, we have Route sixty east master plan. Route seven-eleven Village Master Plan, Courthouse Village Master Plan. Are we doing something beyond our complan and our maps?
I don't believe so.
I, I didn't know what those master plans are.
Yeah, we, we have, um, and this might have been more, maybe more staff, I won't recall if we ever actually had the discussion at the board level, but about, you know, the complan's more general in nature, finishing that and then doing some more focused plans. You know, where you can really dig into an area and get a little more detail, um, so that was kind of thought was, um.
Well, if you're one, we need to get our zoning done, not, not master plans. Uh, you know, so if, if, that's something that's really useful, it needs to be moved out on the horizon a little bit more.
Um, do you think they're worthwhile? I mean, like down at seven-eleven, this is why I ask, you know, if there's generally a couple of large property owners, if we create a master plan, is that really gonna be followed or is that gonna be more market driven?
I think more, less applicable there. Route sixty, I think, would be the big one where it's going to naturally develop by piece here, piece here, piece there. And we probably want a more detailed vision, make sure that over the decades come together comprehensively. Um, so I think there, it makes sense. The village also is a little different in that we have some organic natural growth. So, um, I would say if anything, we could either remove the seven-eleven or put that furthest out, because, yeah, we're gonna be working with a handful of known individuals there on like sixty and Village. So I think it's okay to push them all out some and drop out if we want.
Cause you know, I'm just looking at, short term, we have a water and sewer plan we need to do, we've got a lot of plants.
We gotta have a master trail plan, we got all.
Yeah, a lot of plants. So I would push some of those out. Is that it?
Uh, page one sixty, large, one sixty one, small. Implementation tools, obviously we want the thoroughfare plan to be part of the implementation plan, so it would be funding of thoroughfare improvements through, uh, I'll just leave it at that, we don't have to get into the specifics. Funding, funding of thoroughfare improvements as a template thoroughfare plan, whatever you want to call it. And also through, uh, I would add, development updating of the water sewer plan.
All right. Brett, give us an update of timeline from here on, your thinking?
Uh, so we've got the open houses scheduled next week. Um, so we'll take the plan out to the public fair, get feedback. Um, following that, we can summarize that feedback, bring it back to you all, let you know, here's, here's the comments we got, feedback received. Um, so then that would be, um, uh, we could have this on your October regular meeting agenda if you like, go, if you want to see it then, it's kind of we can, we can see how the open houses go.
Yeah.
I would, Matt, I'd like to see how the open house is built, but also have the opportunity, maybe look at this panel work side by side at the same time. See if there's anything we need to change.
Okay.
We'll add, I mean, in general, it's just fine, but we're reviewing both of those, I can be.
Okay. All right, guys, well, we will now have the second public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Earl Funderman, I'm from seventeen twenty-seven, three Selene. I found out some interesting news, yeah, last night. Um, the deadline to apply for a transportation assistance grant or a transportation alternatives grant is October first of this year, so probably can't you try to submit one of the, uh, Village sidewalk projects to it before October first, like into Shanks Road or the eastern Village sidewalk extension, the ones to Middle School. Um, I also have another question. Could Palatine County make it official, like for the other comprehensive plan to include wording to extend the Village sidewalks to the Palatine Post Office? Because eventually in my ten or twenty years of working, I built a lot of stuff around the intersection there. And it'd be nice to have the sidewalks be officially in the county's DNA that they're gonna eventually be extended to the post office. And I'd like to ask if the county add to the comprehensive plan to put extending the Village sidewalks to the food line, to the Palatine Food Line Academy Road in Route sixty, because eventually in my ten or twenty years, there's probably be a lot of development in that area. It would be nice just to have the Village sidewalks be written down in, in text that it's gonna be eventually extended bigger than it is currently today.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone on Zoom, Mr. Smith?
Where is that?
Okay, County Administrator comments?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to, uh, let, let the board know and thank Allison, Allison, I'm not sure when your last meeting is gonna be. Is it this your last?
This is my last.
This is your last.
I'll be at the complan workshop.
Okay, fantastic, Allison's taken a nice opportunity to, to move on to uh, the city of Richmond and will miss her, the good work that you've done and you've been a great resource for us. Thank you.
You needed to stay here. Thank you. Thank you.
One, one more thing, coming soon, at the back of a big demand, coming soon to a planning permission meeting near you in October. The much demanded planning directors recommendation of, of, so we studied total work the month of September, but I put a recommendation on the zoning cases. And we decided to do the man was so excited, I'm so excited about having the recommendation, but back on October planning permission, so you'll now have we'll have planning recommendations for all the zoning cases.
Okay.
Just like we have in Vegas.
All right, sounds good. Uh, Board comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
And going through all of the complan, uh, and the many meetings we've had, we've really boiled down to only one area that we have any substantial discipline, okay? Which is, uh, Route sixty east in terms of economic development. So looking at this in total, that's, I think that's a pretty decent achievement, okay? So there's only one place where we have, uh, substantial work. So, and we've made significant changes in a lot of areas, particularly compared to what the planning mission said. Thank you all for your, I know I've asked you to look at minutia at times, thank you for your patience.
Bill, you, minutia. Anyone else?
The county minister has been added to the finance committee of the Central Virginia Transportation Authority to the subcommittee of the finance committee for the selection of a financial advisor for the authority. A pretty good job to have because you can well imagine, we want to get the right people in there because we're gonna be doing the bonding for the region for major projects. So our county minister is gonna be one of the people that's participating in that selection, so congratulations, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Lucky though.
Also, Monday, the Regional Transportation Planning Organization will be adopting the region's long range transportation plan. If you're not doing anything, you might want to tune into that meeting and see how the discussion goes. We've already had one discussion last meeting, so uh, I think you're going to see the plan adopted as is on Monday. And lastly, on November fourth, right in Palatine County, we're hosting the Regional Transportation Forum. It's put on every year by the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization. We're in the throes of finalizing that agenda, but if you're available, please come, we're gonna have some best speakers and learn more about transportation in Central Virginia and how we do it, working with Plan RBA, the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization, newly created Central Virginia Transportation Authority. Good call, Sean.
Anyone else?
Matt, Matt, Chair, one last question. We don't have no meeting now until. Is that right?
It's scary. I'm sure something will. It's not gonna be a long amount of me, we can't go that long, we can't go that long without seeing each other. Alright, meeting adjourned.